Captain and zoning board of review meeting to order. If we could all stand for a moment of silent meditation and salute for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public who stands unmoved, undebted, indivisible, in the great justice of our law.
All right, welcome everyone. If I could entertain a motion to flip the agenda just a little bit. We hear petition two first over petition one. We're going to move into the hearing for Mr. Olaf Herman.
Make motion, we change just a second.
Okay, so we got a motion, a second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay. Hello, how are you? Long time no see.
Yes, it's very nice to have you here.
Yes, it's been a very long time, sorry, but we can't really handle what's going on. So now we're going to try to move forward. So it looks like petition two is a petition for a special use permit filed by Olaf Herman on behalf of himself for property located at 21 Fairview Avenue, Platte 28, Lot 16B, an RFR 80 zone to operate a bed and breakfast. The... It looks like all of our checklist items were completed, so we're ready to move to the hearing on this. You guys have any questions? For the applicant, or if you could give us, actually if you want to give us a description of what you plan on doing, and then maybe that will lead into some questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a head start on the possibility of running as a potential income-producing Airbnb situation. I know it's not really required to have that.
Good evening. So my purpose is just to be able to, as a Plan B, generate additional income with this pandemic going on, et cetera, this kind of threw wrench in the entire machine. Running the possibility of an Airbnb, I know it's not really required to have that if the home is occupied by the owner, as it is right now. However, with legislation continuously changing, I'd like to get a head start on that. And I don't really continue, I don't really want to have any other potential use for it. It's just a possibility in the future to rent it out on a weekend basis for Airbnb, for an L and D couple or something, because it's situated on a lake and I may want to use it as a secondary home. My wife still wants to move into the city, although for the last three months, she kind of stopped, stopped pushing forward with that. So it's just a possibility to do that. I just want to have all my ducks in a row in order I want to do an Airbnb once in a while, occasionally. That's all.
You guys have any questions? I always have a few. So I see in here you're going to have no structural changes. You're not adding any bedrooms, expanding the house in any way?
Nothing.
Existing footprint.
Existing footprint, yeah, no changes whatsoever.
With an Airbnb, just so that we have something on the record, describe what an Airbnb is, just so that we have it out there.
It's an online platform, basically, where you rent out either a bedroom or an entire unit. My house is kind of split, that I have two kitchens in it. It's a self-sufficient unit downstairs that's currently utilized by my sister-in-law. And once she's out of the picture, we potentially want to, you know, rent it out on maybe once a weekend or so in a month, or maybe for the summer, you know, to dependable people. But we're also going to be living in the house, so.
So it'll be owner-occupied?
It's owner-occupied, yeah.
They're always there to keep an eye on activities. So with an Airbnb or even a bed and breakfast, would you have any activities, like a concert or fireworks?
No, none of those things.
Any of the costumes?
No, it's going to be quiet. It's going to be 55 pluses, hopefully, is what I'm aiming for.
An Airbnb is just a way to get tenants. You really just want to be a bed and breakfast.
Well, yeah, I don't really want to run it. I'm an airline pilot, so I don't really have the capability to run a, you know, the bed and breakfast, per se. I'm not going to be able to provide like, you know, what you'd get in a hotel or any of that. So it's a self-sufficient, it's a sufficiency unit that I, you know, may want to rent out.
No, my point just being is, we're really giving you a permit just for a bed and breakfast. How you get the clients is up to you.
Right, okay, gotcha. But again, it's only a...
You can be using, yeah, some one or the other.
It's not something that I actually honestly entertain at this point. I just like to have my ducks in a row, you know, for future use, whatever happens. If I become unemployed, for example, I may have to go into that avenue and then do that eventually, but for now, I don't really see that.
No, just for the record, I want to make it clear, you're asking for a bed and breakfast. How you get the clients is up to you.
Correct.
So we'll ask you some obvious things, but we have to get it on this little cloud, I guess, now. You're not going to exceed the bedroom capacity and have people sleeping on the couch and in bunks and things like that, right?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. What else? Don't really have a way to. We don't with any, we don't with any home?
If a neighbor complained that there was too many people there, that they have to go with it.
If you're going to be granting a special use permit specifically within ten, allowing it to operate Airbnb, then how do you limit it?
Number of bedrooms and the septic system is going to dictate how many people can go in there. Yeah, no, I know, I don't think we can. I don't think anybody can. Yeah.
We can stipulate that no more than four, and if they do it, then they're breaking.
I want to find myself in a situation like they have in their answer, on the side of the litigation, when it comes to the number of occupied, you know, unrelated occupants in the house at any one given time. Bedroom doesn't use a question.
That's a good question.
Well, I guess it'd be my question.
How does, well, how does the state dictate that as far as bedroom, like number of people? Two, two people, yes, so then.
Yeah, so we stipulate it, but how do you monitor it? I didn't, I'm not 100% sure if that's the board's concern. I understand that Dan's right, but the town hasn't given us a mechanism to be able to enforce it. The only way would be to complain through Sherry's office and the building inspector going out and say, hey, I'm used to that. No, but I mean, that's the only mechanism that the town has that I'm aware of to monitor.
I mean, we run into the same problem with accessory family dwelling units, even duplexes and things like that. The Women's Development Project over here, right? We had brought that up, was you have, it's supposed to be an elderly, or an over 55?
Community.
Community. And I remember when they put that in, I was asking, it's like, all right, so then when these people's kids or grandkids decide that they have nowhere to live, and then they move in, they're sleeping on the floor of the couch, who's going to monitor it, right? We had no, we have no mechanism until we get a complaint, right?
So in this case, if you get a special use permit and it was granted, that is going to be a period of time that goes with the property, goes with the land?
Depends on how we want, what we want to do.
Technically, the, once a special use permit is granted, you have a year, according to our zoning grants, you have a year to implement and utilize that special use permit.
I think Dan's, Dan's question is more what happens after Mr. Herman moves on. If he sells it, does the next owner now?
I believe that it goes with the plan.
Goes with the, yes.
You got a bearing, so?
Yes.
But you would have to, you would have to come back.
The next owner would be able to operate the same unit.
Do you mean it's a different owner?
We also have, we also have the ability to put conditions on it to limit it to him, so that it doesn't go on in perpetuity, if we're...
It just seems to me like, oh, might be, I'm saying, next owner, neighbor and citizen, but the next person coming down the road might say, hey, this is a cash cow, you know, we're going to have X amount of people, Airbnb is filed by now for my special use permit, and it's transferred with the property. I have a problem with that.
It's limited by the septic, obviously, so otherwise it'd be, it's limited by the septic system, so, you know, there'd be violation in code, and then it could be shut down, obviously, so.
No, I think you answered the question, but if, say, if Danny wanted to buy it, would he, he would have to come in, where's that special permit? And you, A, backside this, there's already kind of licensing and business license or some kind of license that goes with this. If, say, Danny came in and bought it, does an automatic special use permit go with the property? Or does the person have to reapply for everything, license?
You could make yourself a reapplication.
That was going to be my question.
That seems real late.
Solicitor, is it, we either make it, make a condition that it stays with him and advanced with him? Can we do that legally? Or, or would it be?
You could have him come in and reapply, like after a year. I've seen that done. I'll say, like, I'm trying to look up right now. He should be commended for coming into the application.
Oh, absolutely.
Right now, there's 100 of the B and Bs in Hockington already. So the fact that he's coming in to, and being transparent, he should be given some credit for that, sure.
So if there's 100, that means that 99 are the 100.
I'm looking for how many, but there's a ton.
Well, if they're all illegal.
It's Ronnie's house.
No, I mean, well, there's, there's a lot of things that can happen. The same thing with the septic. If, if the owner of the property, regardless of who it is, allows too many people and they cause their own septic to fail, it's a huge financial burden by overuse, right? If you start running your Airbnb and then everybody's doing laundry and you have too many people in there and you ruin the septic system, that's great. You made $500 a week for a couple of years, and then you put in a $60,000 septic, it wasn't a wise choice. But we also don't know who the next owner of the property would be.
And we could, if the board decides to grant it, we could put that it expires upon sale, transfer title, as a condition, a conditional use?
Yeah, something like that, say like...
And the new owner would have to reapply.
New owner, reapply, because he's going to have to go.
Wasn't that an application before for an Airbnb?
I don't know what the state requires, but I would assume some type of business. Another thing to think of in the past and not that it doesn't mean.
Yeah, they would throw it off.
Because it's, it's, yeah, everything, it's small. You need all the stuff.
Yeah, and that's a good point that Mr. Herman just brought up. I don't know if you guys remember, at one point, there was, I think it was called the Bahar Institute. They had come forward and we were proposing the...
Retreat?
Being retreat, yes, the retreat over at the same property. I can't remember specifically if that was formally withdrawn without prejudice, but do you remember, Dan?
It was, yeah, it was. The applicant, the neighbor, at times, turned a mountain. I would not be hoping to come in, and I think they pretty much stopped it. It never got passed the application.
Since then, I, I reduced the size of the house dramatically, first of all. So that's not going to be any of any problems, so. It's, I don't know if you're familiar with it, zoom at the site now, but.
I think I'm having a hard time getting my answer on what a special use permit for. Safety permit and have over 90 gas car rentals, and you're like, what's the special use permit for?
It's required, the district use table requires a special use permit for bed and breakfast.
It'd be, I think he's saying, if not for the breakfast department, it's a Airbnb.
That's my primary target, but in order to be ahead of the legislation that may or not happen in a year from now with the Airbnb, because they require certain, certain stipulations, like for example, fire extinguishers, et cetera, et cetera, smoke alarms, all that stuff. So I want to be ahead of this. I know I don't have to do this. I could do this very well legally on the side, and I wouldn't have to go through you guys with the zoning board and waste anybody's time. I just want to be ahead of the game in order it becomes for me, you know, necessary that I need to, need to do that and rent it out on a monthly or weekly basis. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to...
I understand that, I understand that, but I'm having a hard time with that. There are aspects of a special use permit that I'm not engaging, they lapse over a period of time.
Well, I may or may not. It's, again, right now, the pandemic kind of threw wrenches anyways. I can't even do it. I mean, the hotels are not open, or, you know, even the, whatever we're in or whatever across the street, they don't have any vacancy. I mean, it's, it's, it's all, it's all, it's all hypothetical at this point, but, you know, I'd just like to move forward with it in order to have my ducks in a row.
You said you had a, you said you had a second kitchen in the property?
Yeah.
Is this, I didn't see the town, is that an estate apartment? Is there an estate, sorry, is this the property?
You get a second kitchen on the property.
Mass connect is a second, is there a second apartment already at the property?
No, it's all part of, it's all part of. There's a kitchen upstairs, kitchen downstairs, so.
Would it unrestrict it?
It's unrestricted access. It's all part of the, it's all part of the house, so it's a relatively large house. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the plans of that, for the house.
It's a massive house. On the original owner was, he was, he had thoughts of, you know, finishing the whole house. It sat unfinished for a long time. He finished the basement and was living virtually in the basement, which is larger than most of the homes.
I finished.
Having a second kitchen down in West Lee, there's a lot of people to have a summer kitchen, winter kitchen. One's upstairs, one downstairs. It's much cooler in the basement, and that's where they, they go down, saves on air conditioning and everything else. So it's not uncommon. And it's not, I don't think it's uncommon for this board to issue permits for people who are asking to do something that they might not even fill the entire use. I know in the past, we also approved a bed and breakfast on Blitz Creek Trail, and we didn't delve into how many more people potentially could fill the home other than the two or three bedrooms that are there. Do you remember that one over there? We just asked about uses and things, and we had a lot of neighbors that were concerned with that over there. Basically, it was going to be one or two bedrooms with a couple of people in it, and that was it. The size of this home is potentially to put more people in there, but they're all hypotheticals. I mean, at what point do we ask when the media is going to fly through the roof and blow the whole place up? Right? They're good questions, I mean, and they need to be thought out, but I don't know. We can't police how many people are going in and out of the building. We're going to sit there with a clicker, we'll ask you guys to go in and check on our own. We have to take people at their, at their word that they're doing the right thing. And then when there's a problem, the building officials will go in and have to look at it. It's either the state does when the septic goes belly up and we have a repair going on, right? I mean, I don't know, unless somebody else has a brighter idea as to how we handle that.
If I could interject this, and I understand what Dan's concerns are, especially Tony, when you're coming... Oh, I understand what Dan's concerns are, and Tony as well, coming from all his years in there at Gansett. But I don't think this is the same, the same environment here. It's not, it's not a college town. We don't have tons and tons of students here. It's not a beach town. I'd like to think that you could take it on its own merit that, you know, Mr. Herman's not going to be running a, a place where he's going to try and pack them in like sardines.
It's also owner-occupied. I think depending on his living accommodations and lifestyle, he wouldn't permit lumacy to ensue. But then again, I don't know you, so. It's, it's a great question. I mean, I don't, it's a terrific question. But I think some of the stuff, we have to take people at their word that they're going to do the right thing. And then when there's a problem, we're going to have to deal with it.
Because we're going to be the first office that gets the complaint.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I went through this for 27 years, so.
Do you have any better insight on, I mean, is that, is that thought process that I'm traveling, right?
Well, we haven't narrowed the answer. Of course, we have the college kids, not one. Three unrelated, they never returned, four unrelated, so it's unconstitutional. Now what they're doing there is they're shrinking the lock covered on houses and second floors, but I don't get into that.
Yeah.
On a bed and breakfast, we had a restriction that in a residential zone, you could have one legally, providing you rented up to four, only four persons, so that would be husband, wife, and two children. You had to live on the premises, and you had to keep like records, like a book of who came in and out, and so forth. They got into over four, well, they got into a roomy house type thing. And that was, that went bad, too.
Yeah.
But, I mean, as far as what he's doing, he's got the second kitchen. A lot of people have second kitchens. As long as there's unobstructed access between the units, not a separate living unit with locked doors, I'll find it that.
Would there be some kind of inspection under Parkville before that's issued?
Yeah, I mean, we could go out there and take a look and make sure that the kitchen in that lower level is unobstructed for the rest of the dwelling unit. I mean, we could make that a stipulation with the board, like while there, prior to issuing the building permit, report back that, or not report back, everything's on the other end.
I mean, the board could even set up conditions themselves, such as the accessory for that family dwelling that where technically we're, we're going out there on a yearly basis.
Are we doing that, Eric? Does that happen?
To make sure that it's still family living in there to make, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the house was just completed last year, so I mean, if I just had, I think it's got to rent there, I mean, it must have signed off, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
I don't know how I feel about that. I mean, it's...
It's abuse. There's going to be plenty of neighbors down there.
So let me ask you this, just because I like to think out loud, and I'm not sticking by what I'm going to say, but... So on a bed and breakfast, you have, no, I'm just, I do, I think out loud and I drive him nuts when I do this. You have a bed and breakfast, typically it's a weekly thing. It's not, usually doesn't exceed a couple of weeks, maybe even a month at the most. So then what happens with a bed and breakfast when you get a full-time tenant? So you go in as a bed and breakfast, running under the guise of a bed and breakfast. Not that you're doing this, this is a hypothetical. And now we find out that this person is now living in there two years, three years, and now we have an empty apartment in the guise of a bed and breakfast.
That's what comes down to, like a border. I don't know if the board says it's called borders, because I'm not.
Borders, what do you mean? A boarding?
It's something just with how you could have up to two, you could rent up to two borders.
Yeah.
So have two people living in your house with you as a border, that a full-time person, it's not transient. I mean, I think the board can put, you know, in the table, you use it, code for it says, in that zoning district, you need special use permit. I mean, whatever stipulation the board wants to put on that, we will force.
It's just a thought, because I mean, we know what happens.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah.
Oh, it happens.
You get a lot. I mean, the other thing is, you know, he, in, in Mr. Herman's case, he's, he's a pilot. Say you're away for a while. Maybe, maybe you do, the agent, we are away three weeks or a month, and then now he's hiring someone. He still has his, his house downstairs or upstairs or whatever. Now he's hiring a full-time manager who is now a, what do they call him? Caretaker. Now there's another person living in the home.
So if he's not there?
But if he's not there, what does it matter, right? It's a guest.
No, I think, I think we're open.
We're thinking it through. Oh, yeah, no, we are. But there's a lot of different scenarios.
I think I'm going with Sherry, and you got to take him at his word, and if there's a complaint, then you go back. You deal with it then?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking out loud. And that's what I feel the same way.
Just stop thinking.
Stop talking.
I think his coming before this board is a good indicator of his good faith.
Yeah, because apparently, according to the solicitor, it's being done right now without that.
Without showing up here.
And there's some law with it right now, too?
It's coming.
Well, the other thing to consider, too, is this, this piece of property is an exceptional piece of property. This is not a shack. It's not a typical home. It's, it's, it's a large, nice home, a pond, and it's not something that somebody's going to ruin the property by. It's got considerable property.
That's definitely not solar going up, so.
No. Danz, where are you guys at?
Some checks and balances, that's what they take in from zoning from Tampa, Rhode.
They're all good questions. I mean, that's why we're here.
Some checks and balances, like this guy's going to do it right, but the next guy coming down the fight, why use him as a precedent? Now, hey, you did nothing to him, how come you're going to go through different?
So would you put some conditions?
I just, I like to hear, you know, every year, or at least that change of ownership, then that new owner asks them about him, otherwise.
I'm good with the change of owner.
I do, I'd be with the change of ownership.
Yeah. Because clearly, now, it's, which is a different community, because some of it has a different problem.
So change of ownership, they'd reapply?
If, if they want to have a bed and breakfast.
Their green permit will just expire upon transfer title.
Counselor, does he require a license through the town to run this?
No, so this is, can be something that can be regulated through new zoning law, but has not, or through the town, municipalities, but it's not. It's a big national question. I will say that the apps do a good job of vetting people, so to begin with, they get ID's and verified, and oftentimes, they'll only accept people who have positive reviews of responsible folks to begin with. Oftentimes, probably, or, so if there is no regulation, that's enough.
Yeah, but we're issuing him a bed and breakfast, special use permit. So does the town have other, does he have to get a town license? We're not giving him an Airbnb license.
We don't have, you see what I'm saying?
If he wanted to serve breakfast, for example, or mimosas, then he would have to get other licenses, right? To serve.
That's probably a question for our panel.
I would imagine that there would be something required from the Department of Health in regards to...
Well, is, would he need to get a business license from the town?
Because it would be just like anything, if they have a...
I think it would, right?
Yeah, right.
That's, that's my point. She's talking about an Airbnb. I'm talking about, we're issuing a bed and breakfast. So it has, whatever other regulations has to go with it with the town, he has to apply for it.
Oh, he has to. I mean, that's just a given.
If he can, he can use Airbnb and avoid those things, because they indemnify them, they give them the insurance. It's sort of, he's using their business as a subcontractor.
How do they supplement town requirements?
Because they don't have town requirements. For, for him to allow folks to stay at his home and pay him to do so without serving food or, or alcohol, he's allowed to do that because there's no...
They're just guests.
There's no restriction.
They're guests. That's the legislation.
They have a license, so he basically isn't there much.
So technically, he doesn't have to be here.
No, we are.
No, that's why, we should sort of be given some credit for being here.
Absolutely. Well, that's, I mean, I'm okay with that.
So this is a question that I've had with the Airbnb circumstances, because we, my family is landlords. I mean, I think a few of us here are. We have homes that, we've jumped through hoops for the fire marshals. And now Airbnbs and bed and breakfasts are skirting a lot of that.
No, they require, yeah.
Not in the same way.
No.
I mean, a lot of these apartments, you know, duplexes and triplexes and things, there's a lot of different smoke detector regulations and things that Ronnie would understand, but it may, and I'm sure Tony and Sherry would... Airbnb wouldn't have to jump through those hoops, because it's just a paid guest. It's like having a cousin over that's giving you a couple bucks for food in the fridge, right? That's the problem. I think that's why legislation's trying to be figured out on this stuff. This is a huge insurance liability to your property insurance, your homeowner's insurance.
They indemnify them to $100, through those, through those apps.
Still getting off my point.
But the issue is, we can't, I don't think, you can't, you don't have to issue...
Restate your point, because I talk so much, I mess it up.
By him coming in here, the only license that we're, or the only special use permit we're allowed to give him is for a bed and breakfast. If he does a Airbnb after, that's not really in our control.
You're right.
According to the solicitor, if I understand, so he's here asking for the license that we can give.
So let's, let's stay focused on that.
He's going to have Airbnb tomorrow.
Come on.
Right, right, okay. So that's where we're at. So in my opinion, he's doing the right thing.
Oh, absolutely.
And then whatever it turns into in his retirement or whatever, he might want a full Airbnb. He'll have the legit license, I'm not meaning a full bed and breakfast.
He'll have a history where, where, you know, he's sort of going on record today.
I have no problem, but that's part of the discussion of what we deal with here.
But I do like the condition that it has to be reapplied.
I have no problem with that. I think that's something that we should remember for all of this.
Anything, any kind of special permit.
Well, that's not true. If you start a business and then you sell it, there are, there are, there are circumstances where I'd argue that point.
You know, what's to say, next guy comes along, says, I'm going to rent boats out here, and I guess, give them the fund, all of a sudden, you know, it's not insane, it's just, who are 55-year-old plus people, you know, joining the folly with somebody for a week and a half, tooling around in the fund?
I brought up the same point that you made with the campgrounds, if you remember. When we had, we were, one of the campgrounds applied, and the owner was very forward with everything he was giving us, and it was going to be run very well. Then I also said, what happens when, you know, not fashion bikers, but Joe the biker buys it, and next thing you know, you've got $100, actually, Joe York the biker. No, but it turns into something that's much different, because the business owner only cares about money, and they do not care about their businesses. It's just about making the dog. They don't care about what they're portrayed as in the community.
But that's the kind of business that you couldn't, or I wouldn't go for. But that's the kind of business that you couldn't, or I wouldn't go for issuing a special use permit contingency on title change. Because that's basically saying you built this million-dollar place, and then if I wanna sell it, you may or may not reissue the special use.
You're consistent, because I actually think I remember you saying that when I brought that point on, on the campground. I do.
If you had a line, you have a bed and breakfast, that essentially, this is a big house, we've already established that. All of a sudden becomes, you know, 10 units or 10 rooms, I'll create a separate system, I've got my bed and breakfast license. The board's there, it runs the bedrooms, match fee, but a separate, matches the number of bedrooms, for good, coming back in at 10, now it's, this is thrown, hey, this is a lucrative business, gonna move on and sell it, and to your point, he's doing all that under the premise that he has a special use permit, a business license, you know, in theory, loosely, and, and there's value in that.
Well, that's why I'm okay with restricting, you know, if it's a four-bedroom today, and they wanna change it to a five, then you gotta come in and redo it. Special use permit.
Do we limit the occupants?
That's all convenient, by, by, by accepted design, it's eight occupants, period.
So what, so what happens now he rents to a family of five?
They have, they're renting two other bedrooms.
Alright.
No, I'm just.
I understand, I mean, also, I mean, also, what would be the harm if somebody chose to stay and do a real nice bed and breakfast? I mean, more business for the town, or, or revenue, I mean, anybody who's in it.
Don't misunderstand us, we're not against it, we're just thinking it out, because we don't do it all.
So, well, I, I think it's not necessarily more business for the town, it's how is it in harmony with the neighbors?
Absolutely.
Because you're in a residential zone, so if, if this gets out of hand, not that it's doing, but if, if it got out of hand because of a new owner, or now you're absent, you, you moved to the city and you can fill it, now how do the neighbors all? Do, how do they have harmony? How does it protect their property values? It potentially could, potentially could not, if it.
So far, I, I base the property value for everybody around me, so this tells very well how much I care about property.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that helps.
So that house was empty for, for 20 years, so it's never finished, and now it's a gem, so, so I, I. I guess for more, we need to make this town to, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, that helps protect the property values, it, it boosts the neighbors up.
Absolutely.
But also that we have to worry about harmony within the neighborhood, that's part of what our duty is and our charge. There's a lot of things, and that's another big one, is to make sure that all the neighbors enjoy the use of their property, and they're not infringed upon by somebody who, yes, they piece their property values, but they destroyed their way of life because there's too much noise going on. Or there's too much traffic. It's a consideration we have to take into effect. And again, it's not directed at you, it's a conversation we have to have.
So getting back to what Danny said.
Yes.
We have, we can certainly limit it to, to people per bedroom, so eight total.
Yeah.
Because that's the ISDS regulations.
Yep.
And has to reapply if it's a change of title.
Upon, I just put, upon transfer of title, it expires, and then let him reapply like Ronnie just said, I, I like that terminology better myself.
If, he knows going in, so if he wants to sell it to somebody that wants to do a bed and breakfast, they can come in ahead of time.
And I don't think it'd be a big problem, if we, they, we'd put them through the same ring, or they'd answer the questions, and then everything was kosher.
That might be a track record.
Yeah, and it would be positive, and it'd be very, it would be a simpler, um, and. What's the matter, Dan?
Just make sure the language is clear on the transfer, each of the transfers, uh, is one of his own LLCs or a trust, and even that doesn't trigger a cancellation of the contract. As long as the transfer goes on, it's on the transaction, somebody's not connected to him.
But Casey changes the name, he stays ownership, yeah, I'm with you.
He stays ownership, it's still, it's still his, you know, here.
As long as he's the principal owner, whatever name he uses. You know what he's saying, right?
Yeah, how do you wanna word it?
End order.
Mr. Attorney, I solicited, you, you, you guys can speak legally, because I'm not a attorney, so.
Use currently expired my transfer of title unless, um, or, I don't know.
Let's, I don't know. I would, I would almost think if, if it was staying within his ownership, when it was a transfer to himself, wouldn't that be something that would be handled probably administratively? Or do we, do, do we nullify that by putting this in here just because it's a change of title?
Well, that's what Danny said.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Danny wants to make it easy on him if he opens up Ovali LLC.
Yeah. Tell me, tell me how we're gonna put it in as a condition, give me the verbiage.
He's a principal.
Unless the entity is owned by current applicant, namely, Olaf, right?
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So, well, let's get it, let's get it out there, so when we go through this, so that Joe and I actually know that this condition is, is very clear for the record.
Read us, read us, what do you got?
Joe doesn't have anything right now, because we were just, we were discussing it through, so if somebody.
I have my loose ideas of what it's gonna be, but.
Upon transfer of the title, the permit expires. Of the, so, Veronica, what did you say again?
Upon transfer of title, use permit shall expire unless the entity the title's transfer, is transferred to is owned by current applicant, namely, Olaf Hermit. Is your wife on the deed as well?
She's on the, yeah.
And her name, Olaf?
K E L I T A L E O T.
T A L E O T?
E O T, yeah, E O T.
Okay, unless the entity of the title is transferred.
No, unless the title is transferred to an entity that is owned by the current applicant. And that's gonna be limited by number of bedrooms, to two per bedroom.
Unless.
Or their kin.
Unless the title is transferred to an entity of the applicant's.
Or kin.
You can use that kin.
Okay, do you have it up to that point?
Or kin.
Unless the title is transferred to an entity of the applicant's.
Or kin. So if they got kids.
You guys fine with the kids getting it? Or kin?
Hey, she said sleep.
Well, it could be, it could be kids, uh, I thought, kin, because it's kin, it's, I, you know, members.
That expands it, that expands it to his crazy uncle.
I might like his crazy uncle.
Crazy, no, we started chasing a tail, I know.
They might wanna come here.
You didn't deny that, he was crazy, though.
We, we used to have a great country.
Yes.
I said, we used to have a great country, they might wanna come over.
Used to. They're all set, we're gonna stay away right now. Dan, are you fine with that? Rudy, Dan Harrington?
Yes.
Are you fine with that? That wording?
I'm fine to me.
Okay. Joe, do you have it clearly, you think?
Yeah, I think so, upon transfer.
Out of pressure.
Upon transfer of title, the use expires unless the title is transferred to an entity of the applicant's or kin. Or their kin? Or their kin.
Great job, Joe. Jake, be the next speechwriter. Great job.
Sounds good, Rudy. It'd be an occupation limit of, um, two people per bedroom, total of no greater than eight.
In the household.
Right. Within the entire house. Okay, about that. Any other discussion? Ready to move on? Do you have any more time?
Comments from public?
Yeah, any comments from the public, any closing statements, Mr. Herman?
How was that, Danny?
Inspectors, good?
No, I would like to say, I, I think it's admirable of Mr. Herman to be coming in for this. You can go on Google right now tonight and find about 10 properties that are listed as bed and breakfasts. And you can enjoy a wonderful time on the pond, on Winchek Pond, or Wiltersville Pond, from parties that are hosting these BnBs that, you know, did not give the benefit to the board to hear it.
Yes, no, I do, I commend him for coming, you're doing the right thing, you know you are, and we, we do appreciate it. Sorry you gotta listen to this, but this is democracy, so we all go around in circles, and then eventually we all come back to thinking the same way. Comfortable? You want me to read it? You wanna do it?
Sure, you can read it.
Well, I can, I mean, I can read the thing, and then you guys can fill in the answers.
Aye. Aye. Oh, not that time yet?
I gotta find the thing.
Sorry, I get ahead of things.
I'm gonna miss Tucker.
Oh, wow. If I have, I don't even know if I have. Went from three meetings a week to none.
Yeah, we're rusty.
Because who was this week, what, town council planning?
Well, we had the fire meeting for the first time in three months.
Say that, because I don't have any.
Town council Monday. Planning yesterday, right?
Did the plan and met?
It usually goes in seconds. Town council planning.
I don't know if they met, that's what I'm asking you. I don't know if they had a meeting or they didn't.
All right, ready? I'll try and do this, so you guys can fill in the answers for me. Um, so in granting a special use permit, the, um, I then entertain a motion that the zoning board shall be satisfied by legally competent evidence that proposed use and our structure will be compatible with the neighboring uses and will not adversely affect the surrounding neighbors' use and enjoyment of their property. So move. Second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would also entertain a motion that it will be environmentally compatible with the neighboring properties and protection of property values.
Second. So move.
Second.
We've got a second, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion that it will be compatible with the orderly growth and development of town, of the town, and will not be environmentally detrimental therewith. Also move, second. Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, I entertain a motion that all best practices and procedures to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects on the neighboring property, the town, and the environment have been considered and will be employed, including but not limited to considerations of soil erosion, water supply protection, septic disposal, wetland protection, traffic limitation, safety and circulation, and also that the, the propose, the purpose of the ordinance and set forth in the comprehensive plan shall be served by said special use permit.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Would, uh, any special conditions, gentlemen?
The two big ones, yeah.
Throw him out as a motion.
I make a motion that as a special condition, the occupancy be limited to two persons per bedroom, with a no greater than eight individuals per household.
Tom, correct, oh, is there another? Oh, you wanna, oh, let's just load on, just singly. So that was a motion, we got a second from Ronnie, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd also make a motion that the condition of, of upon sale of the property, the special use permit will expire unless the title is transferred to an entity of the applicant or his kin.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Second, Dan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with all that being said, I'd entertain a motion that the special use. Go ahead, we have a discussion. Anything else?
Uh, just, we should make a motion that he has to obtain any and all applicable permits required.
Okay, Ronnie has a motion on the floor that the applicant obtain any permits or application, other applications.
License.
Applicable, applicable, uh.
Licenses.
I'd obtain, okay, it's, any discussion?
Can you, can you lengthen that a little bit more, as far as just, it's just kind of like a, throw a blank, or I mean, as far as does he have to have the house, you know, does the fire department have to go there and check that?
No, just if there's a town license he needs to get, he needs to get it. I, I don't think there's any state permits on that. There's not any fire marshal permits on anything that I know of. Just whatever the town has, business license, whatever.
In care, Mr. Chairman? All right, so, then, um, I think what Ronnie's trying to say, and I entertain this as a motion, that the applicant shall obtain any and all permits required from the town. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay, so that was Ronnie's motion.
Second.
We got a second from Dan, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other conditions, thoughts, concerns? Okay, then I'd entertain a motion that we deem the special use permit for a bed and breakfast that, um, address, we had 21 February admin, but 28, lot 16B, being complete. And so approved.
Second.
Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming, Andy.
Best of luck to you.
Yep, good luck.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Yeah, could, um, can I entertain a motion for a five-minute break? So move.
So.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I entertain a motion to re-adjourn? So move.
I got a second. Aye. Second, he's all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, yes, at that point.
So, uh, we're moving on, we're moving back to petition one, which became petition two, which is to determine completeness of application, which is a special use permit, um, petition for a special use permit filed by David Marino, for a property located at 215A Alton Bradford Road, Pla- 5 Lot 25A. On behalf of the Marino's Auto Repair LLC, the petition is, again, for a special use permit for expansion of pre-existing non-conforming use. The applicant is proposing in addition to the existing auto repair facility. So hello, Mr. Marino? How you doing?
Good.
Good. Well, we're gonna go through, tonight, we, we're just going through the preliminaries of a, um, a checklist to make sure that we have everything, to see if we can get to the hearing stage. We'll see where it falls, and then we'll take it, take it from the next step, okay? Just because I lost Joe, unless Mike would like to do it, do you wanna read the checklist, Mike?
Yep.
I don't know if that's, I think it's in this. Go ahead and look this. Last one?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes. You got it, Mike, or I can, I got one, I can read it.
Yeah, mine's a lot, you want me to read it? Let me see which one you got.
That's, that's the checklist, just a special use permit, should be right on the top.
Yep. Two pages.
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Just read that, and we'll go through the checklist.
All right. Here we go. The application for special use permit of zoning board review must be accompanied with following information. A, three copies of site prepared by and signed, stamped by professional engineer or professional land surveyor. At scale of, listen, two, one inch, 40 feet, here, I'm showing.
We have ten. Okay, um, so, that first question, A, um, what we have presented to us is actually a draft that's not stamped. Um, and it's not, also not signed, um. It was, it looks like, it looks like a draft that was prepared by, um, Dan Harrington, which is one of the members of our board who has refused himself at the moment, till we get clarity whether he considers or not, but this is, this is a draft, it's not a, uh, it's not a signed, stamped, certified, uh, set of plans. Um, and it is stamped draft. We could go through this and, and We could go through this and, and see if some of the information is on it. Um, but I, I don't think we can pass the first hurdle on that just because of those, those few things.
Oh, well, let's see what else he needs in it.
Okay.
See if there's some blatant reason that he would not be.
Does the, does the applicant feel it's close?
Say that, go, go ahead.
Does the applicant feel it's close to where he needs to be or if we're not past that and if Dan's doing the engineering work in, in the planning, then I think he probably already knows that he's going to be short on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think A, um, it's going to have to, A is going to have to be completed, um, by either Mr. Harrington or some other firm that's going to sign it and stamp it because the draft isn't going to, um, pass muster right now, I think, in this application. If the board sees that, um, I think that's probably a question just to see if we even bother proceeding with the questions on A. There's no point in going through the other ones if, if it can't pass the, the signed stamped issue, right?
Yeah, it's, it's just like, there is a drawing, there is a.
So I'd entertain a motion that checklist item A is, um, incomplete at this point, um, as it's not signed or stamped by a professional engineer or land surveyor. Now I'm entertaining a motion. No.
Is, are we missing a print then? Did you have?
Well, what happened is I hired Dan to do it. But Dan, I believe, uh, pre-existing plot room from Albiorell, a full-size scale drawing, said Albiorell line.
That's not, that wasn't, um.
I might have given you the wrong thing. I don't know.
Submitted?
I hired Dan to do it.
Well, really, that's my question. I mean, if, 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 number A, we're not, we're not even there in number A. The question is, are you here to get some feedback from the board, maybe, uh, to get some feedback as to waivers, which I'm glad to go through, but I don't want to see you waste your time in, either. So it's really your call.
Well, meaning waste my time.
Being here tonight, if you want, if, if we're going to have to revisit this, correct? We would, we would have to reevaluate this?
Well, can you go through the bracket?
That's my point. Yeah, that's what I, I want.
That's what I'm asking you. If that's what you want to do, I'm glad to do it.
Yeah, because we, we can tell you what's outstanding. So our problem right now, just the first hurdle, which is, the checklist is in the application. So there's, there's, some of the other more incidental information on A, because A has about nine questions. They might be on this, but this is a draft and it doesn't meet the first hurdle of the reasons I said.
Because I put a small, the full-size scale drawing that Dan made me, said Albiorell on it. I didn't bring any of that with me.
That, well, Al's a different business than Dan.
No, I know. Um, I think what happened is Dan was going to find it at the time. So forever, so I believe he, I may even go, I'll talk to Dan.
Yeah, well, that's, okay, so, um, we, we'll go through and see what we, we have, we, where we have deficiencies or if you need more things. And at least you'll know what you got, hurdles you got to jump through. Okay?
This, uh, have you all thrown the plans away?
Being which plant? The site plant?
No, the building.
No, uh, uh, what's this?
Oh, Tom did it?
Tom did it.
Okay. George signed off on it.
George signed off on it.
Okay.
Any more?
No, that's it.
All right, so I entertain a motion that checklist item A is not complete.
Second.
So move, second.
That's a bad one. So move. Dan can second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
So he knows he needs to fix that one.
Yeah, well, I'll make notes and we'll go, at the end I can recap what you need to do or if you want to follow along. So basically we got to get something signed and stamped by one of these guys. So then checklist item, oh, actually, Mike, you were doing them. I'm sorry.
Yep, so we're done with A. P, three copies of the second map. So they're property under all section 4524, that's two, R I D L. Also, it's just in the name, so it's physical boundaries or any of these, they're good properties.
Okay, so I'm looking, all right, yep, looks like we got a, uh, I believe he's got it. A map here, um, usually we read through with, I, I can read through them if somebody wants to check off the lots. Right. You got the, you got the lots, the map. Are you going to read them?
It's up to you. You want to read them or I'll check them out?
I'll read the names. Let's follow. So, um, looks like we're on, um, plat map five, lot 84 is Joe and Suzanne Bagley.
There.
Um, we have plat map five, lot 91. It's Stephen and Cecile Marie Verdic. Uh, plat map six, lot 35. Evan E. and Maroni, oh, Kathleen Maroni. I know, I'm sorry. Evan E. Bloom and Kathleen Maroni. No, Maroni.
No, Maroni.
You thought I'm mad now? There's a Y on there.
Oh, I'm not reading this.
Um, okay, so that's that one. So then we have, uh, map five, lot 85 is Richard Basusa. Oh, there's all these little ones. Gosh, um, 85. You see it there, Dan?
Yep, it's right next to the applicants.
The, uh, the applicants, uh, Marino's Auto Repair is map five, lot 85A. Um, we have map six, lot 34A is Daniel E. Wood and Emile Andros right across the street. Um, then we have map five, lot 86 is Samuel A. Crohn. 86, 86 is.
Right between.
Oh, that little guy there, right? Um, then we have map five, lot 91C is Neil A. Roma. 91C is. Hmm, where's that?
Ninety, is the big lot 91C? Is that what they call them, C?
That's kind of hard to see.
That one says it's 91 and it's attached to a little hook that goes on A and B. Maybe it is. 90, 91. All right, take a look at that and see if you see 91C on there.
It does, right? Close, 91.
Oh, there, there's down, down low, just below 84. Ronnie picked it up. See below 84.
So you do need 91C.
Yeah. See below 84, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, it looks like all of those are there. We've missed any? So I'd entertain a motion that checklist item B is complete.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, oh, for Mike. All in, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Got one down. B's good. Move to C.
Aye. C, so erosion or stormwater control plan with supporting regulations based on standards approved by USDA Soil Observation and Performance of Algae Erosion and Cement Controlling.
Is he seeking a waiver? The applicant seeking a waiver?
I don't know. I don't think we can, we can grant a waiver. There is wetlands on property. Yes, he is, uh, C.
C and D is looking for a waiver? Um, I also kind of feel the same way Ronnie does. I think C and when we get to D, I think both, um, I don't believe we can waive it.
What, why is he asking?
Yeah, because isn't that a loop that runs right down through the center of the fabric?
There is a river that runs through, okay, no, there's a little loop that runs.
Yeah, but how can we waive that without?
We can't.
What, why are you seeking a waiver of those two? Just out of curiosity?
I, I don't know. Uh, that's what I would kind of advise to do for my fucking lawyer. He just said ask for a waiver. I don't, I don't know what I should and shouldn't do. That's what I'm here for.
Mm-hmm.
If you didn't have the group that ran through the property.
Well, and brought dry, probably seven months a year. Again, I understand it. There's a runoff. We looked it up. It was a secondary wetlands.
So as far as the state concerned, still a wetland.
It is.
You're going to need to flag it and then we have appropriate, yeah. So we, we can't, we can't waive that.
No, the state's going to have to give us a determination on, um, on those two, um.
What was, I think the statement was made to see how close he can get without spending a bulk of his money.
Well, that was the deal. I didn't want to spend money to draw a structural if I can't attach it.
If you can't, especially if you can't get by the wetlands part from the state and everything.
Well.
Because that's, that's not regulated by us.
No, I understand. A hundred percent. I just, uh, I can't continue where I am at the business management. So I either got to repeat feet or I got to do something to change.
Only because it's not clear and we usually wouldn't ask this in this point because we would have a print that shows. Where are you actually going to do the new building? Are you adding on to the one that's there?
All I'm trying to do is put a foundation completely outside of the existing foundation after building that the building is cracked and falling down.
So are you really looking to rebuild the building?
That's all I'm trying to do. Rebuild the back half. Two, and they, the, uh, structural's a two feet from the existing building, the foundation, only because I can't take right next to the building. The back block walls, crap, where it comes together and separated. I mean, it ripped the chimney off the building to windows. There's no foundation per se under that building. I dug on it. I dug next to it. So what I wanted to do was literally repair my building, but to do that, I, I wanted to add some roof tiles to the back. Because I work on a lot of bigger vehicles and it's a low ceiling. And all I wanted to do was add three feet in the front and have a handicap accessible office. So I went handicap.
Three feet there?
That's all.
It's a small increase of footprint.
The building's nine.
Most of that is the, is the accessible.
I'll look it on the inside of the building if I have to, if this is going to stop me.
Well, if you.
Voice proposing height here.
A height change.
Height change in the back. And move my office to the front of the existing opening, but add a few feet to it and cap itself.
But according to the opinions, it's service by accessible. So he's going to have to upgrade the second gen, correct?
I think that's a building official call.
With, Tony, would he have to upgrade his septic?
Absolutely. Well, that's not us. He's.
How's I have to upgrade my septic? There's no octagon, no bathroom, no stick.
Listen, he'll explain. It's not us.
So, well, that's, that's not our, that's not our choice.
Okay.
So you're going to go to D E and drop, you're going to fill out system suitability determination. And they're going to make a decision on whether they're going to give the letter saying you don't need a septic system.
Yeah, I just had, I just had a pump.
Is it accessible or a septic system?
It's accessible.
All right, so you, what they're going to do is you're going to go there. You're going to try to give them as much information as you can on that septic system.
All right.
And then they're going to, you're going to fill out a system suitability determination. And they're going to say, you either need to upgrade it or you can leave it to the agents.
Okay. And, uh, there's, there's no shot of you, with a cesspool, there's no shot you can get that.
Yeah, well, I'm talking, I'm not talking, I don't believe it's a cesspool. It's a tank with a leaching tank. I mean, I had some very septic check it out. Like I said, I didn't know exactly what it is. I don't.
They, they may have, if you go, if you call up there, they've done a lot better. They may look that up for you.
I don't think there's anything in records to be fair to them.
Well, maybe your engineer can tell you, you know, do some finding around, find out what's there.
All I know is there, I don't know.
They're going to make, they're probably going to make you upgrade your system.
Well, the only reason I was, the only reason I was asking that question was because you start getting into, to mapping out the wetlands. If, if he was required to do that. That's the only reason I was asking.
No, I get it. And I want to do it right. Don't get me wrong. I want this right, but the end result is if this is going to turn into something that's just ridiculous on the model, it's not what it's expected for, I'll just buy my own building.
We don't, we, I don't, I can't speak for the board. I don't want to see that happen.
I don't see how to do, there's only two of us in office.
Right.
But the end result is I bought this property and long before I even did this, this was a, this was a plan. You know what I mean? And I did some preliminary checking. Not that it was right or wrong. People just don't think possibly, possibly this is that. Now I'm at the point that I have to do something, one or whatever.
That's understandable. I mean, that's.
Right, I'm not mad at anybody. Don't get me wrong. I, I mean, it's not just, I told Dan, you got me a block plan and now I find out it's not accurate, you know what I mean?
Or. No, it's not that it's not accurate. It's not the right document.
Right, I get it. It's not as extensive as it needs to be.
Right? I mean, what, what?
And that's why it says draft.
Okay.
Because that's just what the draft says.
Okay.
I mean, he's, he's, he's given you a, a professional sketch, but he hasn't put the detail in it to give you a stamp, plan that he can stand behind. I mean, that's why he has a license.
Right.
Um, and he didn't.
But I started that. You're two years.
No. Yep, but that's, that, you, you need more. And I mean, it's part of the, this checklist and everything. This is, this has been around forever. Um, and go into the, the, the building zoning officials' offices where everybody needs to start. Because a lot of times we have people that get here, say about things. They come in and are totally misled by a builder or a septic guy or a construction guy or a shoemaker and then they, they hit here and all of a sudden, the shoe hits the fan.
Now, as far as the septic, you, you said you dug it up?
Oh, yeah.
And what did you find? A tank and some galleys?
I found a tank. Then about 15 feet from that, there's a giant, like, honey hole. It's, it's a big galleys, I guess, with a six-foot popper on it.
So at the D E and you can say, I mean, at the minimum.
We, I said, I had my septic people go to D E and see if there was anything on it.
What did they say?
Nothing.
I'm sure it was put in, and I've heard the D S A before the D E went and put it in. You know what I mean? I, I know it's not.
Well, I did.
You know what I mean? I know it's not.
A suitability may deter, they may determine that there's no, there's no change of use, there's no increase in employees and you may be fine. And that's something that's relatively inexpensive in the grand scheme of things to, to get done. It's about $200.
Right, yeah.
To make a termination.
You may, you, you may have to tell your engineer to draw, investigate what is there. They, they may want you to submit what, what is existing.
Okay. They may actually come out and inspect.
Okay.
Time for the set suitability, especially without having any prior prints that you're aware of.
I said, uh.
That's not uncommon. We're up there, you know, prints to be released, not filed, right?
It was there before you bought it. It's not like they're going to come in and beat you up.
Even if it's illegal, it's not your problem.
Right, but I, whether it's legal or illegal, it's operational for me. So it's immaterial at this point, you know what I mean? But it, it, it's material. It can move on.
Would you, is your opinion on it changed in light of the fact that he's not exceeding current footprint?
He is exceeding.
Well, to accommodate handicap accessibility for the front of the building.
I was kind of wondering whether that actually.
That's the front?
The handicap is into the front, correct?
Correct, and the, the existing footprint includes the opening that's outside, which is useless. So all I did is add three feet to that opening to make it keep foot ability for handicap to get in and out. Right now it's a handicap, it's a bill to activate all people with wheelchair hands. I mean, I think they all improve shop because it's not acceptable in my insurance company, so they sit outside in their wheelchair.
Does, does the height change in the back?
Just the back.
Matter to the town?
Well, what happened, because the ADA accessibility, you got to put a ramp in.
Correct.
But you're a great.
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
In your bathroom, you'll have to put a van accessible parking spot.
That's it. I have a handicap.
For the travel. In your bathroom, you'll have the ADA. By swing. Bars. I, I can give you all that information.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't aware of that because I don't have a couple of records.
Well, you have to have it because, not that, in case you have a, a handicap employee. And that doesn't mean, you know, someone in a wheelchair, somebody with a cane.
No, I understand, but that, that weighs on whether I want to make my office handicap accessible.
Your what?
My office handicap accessible. That's what I'm trying to do. Make it so my patrons can come in the building and want to sit outside in a wheelchair.
That's right, but you still have to do an ADA upgrade on the bathroom.
All right, so let's back up a little bit. So this is a non-performing building. Predate stone. If he wants to repair the building. He doesn't have an ADA, why does it have to be here?
If he, if he repairs, if he repairs the building, like, it looks like he's putting like an addition on his raising. Without repairing, you're, you're putting more space in.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
A hundred percent, but the goal was to, yeah, but if you were to inspect the building, it's even close to being, you can't raise the roof, you're gonna walk, walk. So if I have to rip the roof off, why, what's wrong with, well, I understand.
If you're adding, you're, you're legally non-performing pre- and visiting use, under that section eight, that you ordered technically, section eight. You gotta go to the zone work for special use if you do any type of expansion.
Yeah.
So that you're here, that's right, you're here.
That's why I'm here, right, but, I mean, uh, there is zero foundation on the back of that building, it's slab on grade.
I know, that, that's, that's not necessarily the, the relevance. If you, if you were repairing the existing footprint. Not expanding anything, not expanding the height. Yeah, you're allowed to repair your property. But you're expanding in several different areas.
Well, I'm proud of you to expand.
We understand that, that's why you're here. So you're expanding to the front for ADA. You're also expanding the, the building by raising it, it's an expansion. You're also potentially expanding the use because you're gonna do a little, maybe a little bit more business. Right? Then it, right, so then if you hire more people and it falls in the bathroom, everything stops to snowball. Right?
To me, the footprint is an expanding component. So he can get by the hurdle of the septic system issue.
Yeah.
I don't have issue with what he's doing.
Yeah, because the, the, the footprint expansion is in the front, right? He's moving.
Big back four foundation to support, but it means a lot of else, at my point.
Right, but that, that's, the, the foundation is a repair, it's not really an expansion. Raising and falling is an expansion, right?
That's what's kicking into the question of the septic system and the wetlands.
Uh, I think all of those things accumulated. The, the expansion in the front is running parallel-ish to the wetlands, but we still need a determination. If he starts, he's gonna start disturbing the area around, right? We, we need, we need.
He's not expanding the footprint, the state would look in the, on the wetland side. That would, in fact, yeah, his big hurdle would be the septic.
I think, yeah, I, I mean, I, let's, I realistically, I think the septic is probably the crux of your problem. We're not saying we're not going to create it one way or the other, but you have, you have these hurdles. We need to get the system suitability out of the septic. Which will have the soil erosion, um, and stormwater plan result kind of part of.
He's here for an opinion on whether we would go or not, right? So I'm thinking if he could cross them hurdles, I wouldn't have a big problem with expanding the building up in a couple of feet.
With, with what we know right now, the board would probably.
Absolutely, I, I support it, because him going up is not enhancing, he's not, he's not doing more vehicles, he's doing different vehicles, he's accommodating clients, he's already handled.
I'm working in a building.
Exactly.
Also, I'm gonna work on a new deck.
I, I sup, I support like a pride.
Working in a parking lot, I can be in the building. No, but your main reason to be here is to see if you supported enough to spend the money to do the rest of it. And the point we're making is we do it. Because what you're asking for is very insignificant of a change of the building. Going up there all in three, two years, it's not there. So, I think if he gets a, a regular engineer and addresses the septic system issues on your page.
I'm sorry?
On your paper.
Oh, yeah.
So if he gets an engineer that can, you know, address the wetlands, address the septic system and gets there. That, the stamp, they're probably in pretty great shape.
And that's all kind of one package, because you have to have the engineering and the plan, the stamp plan, to get the system suitability from the state. Which will have the stormwater, I mean, all that, the biologist, all that stuff is gonna come together under that one package. It's a whole bunch of little things, but it's all, it's all one thing. I don't think, Sherry can elaborate. I, I mean, is, do you see any objections from the building department on him doing this if he jumps through those hurdles?
No, not at all.
Have we had any objections from neighbors?
But that's the thing, we, ultimately, I mean, you guys can ultimately grant a special use permit. Without having a system suitability determination, we can't grant the building permit.
The state will allow it.
Yeah, but, well, I understand, and I'm kinda like running circles because I did a bunch of big, and the way it was explained to me even at D E M is if I wasn't changing occupancy, they didn't think I had to do anything with the septic. Which I thought I was doing myself, but that's what I did when I called and I called for them.
If they say that, that's fine.
Well, don't get.
If, yeah.
Yes. Get it, get it in writing. If you get it, if you can get that in writing and then get us a better plan. Get it to the building department, we'll have it and then we can move forward. Right?
The problem is, the system that he described to me would not be allowed there. No, probably won't, I mean, so. What, what I'm, what I'm saying to you is you're probably not gonna be able to do this project without updating the septic. So your best bet is to get an engineer. Tell him what you, you need a plan, you need an approved septic or set suitability, right? The state's not gonna give you that with a secret script, and that's what you're describing. They might go, they don't allow that anymore. Oh, right. And plus, you have a wetlands running through there, so it would lead me to believe that the water tank was high, which is secret script. Very, very. Well, then that type of system would not be allowed. Not saying that it's not a big, you know, it might not be a big deal to get enough ready, but you need somebody that, to walk, a regular engineer to walk.
That's a big hurdle, not us.
But that's, but that's his only hurdle, because he's gonna be okay with the rest of it, with the plan that he's showing us.
I don't, I mean, I, at, what we see right now, we're not in a hearing, we don't have all the facts. Having a general overview, I don't think you have any objections from the board, but you have state hurdles you have to jump through to do this.
But Dan pretty much explained that to me years ago.
Yeah.
So that's why you got a little debate, and, like I said, the, the people I talked to were, seemed to be able to find, but, once again, it's all. It, it is, because when you get down to, to what's allowed and what's not allowed, in, in the high water table, that secret script is not allowed. Right. It's over, there's not even a question. I mean, nobody's gonna force you to fix it now. No, I understand. The only problem though, when you go for a system suitability, you are open enough to possibility that they could force you to fix it one way or the other. Okay? I had that in back of my mind the whole time, to be perfectly honest with you, you know what I mean? But that's, I might spend a hundred thousand dollars for a permit. You might, because you'd probably end up in the bottom of the sand filter, because of where you are, and it's built, it's built properly, that's not. It's odd the way it is. Because it's a repair, or an operation is really what they'll call it. They'll, they'll probably give you a little lenience, but that's where you're gonna go. Best bet is to get, you know, somebody like Danny or whoever that's licensed to design and get that question answered. Once you get that question answered, the rest of it's, the rest of it's fine with us. You know, those, we don't have a bunch of objections, and then David's coming, yeah, I can't, you know, but.
So, because he's got two, he's got three other waivers, he's got F, G, and H, and I, I don't think I have a problem with F and H.
Which one's that?
Traffic study.
I'm okay with the traffic study.
H being the proposed water supply.
Uh, that's gonna be addressed by the new septic.
Exactly.
Except for the quality. You mean quality of water? Yeah, yeah. I don't think I'd have trouble waiving that because it's gonna be part of the septic anyway.
And he doesn't, on E, I don't see it. Do you see anything that has the, uh, existing septic on that plane?
No, I, I mean, he dug it up.
So.
I did locate the septic on the map, we did have it located. Should be in that package.
I, you know, let me see.
It doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, but if it's located, it is twenty-two feet from the building to the progress.
That's, it's not the right plan anyway, so, um. So, with that being, well, with all that being said, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just.
I'm gonna try and move this along.
Really? Well, what else?
No, well, I'm, so. Checklist item C, D, and E, which is soil erosion, a letter from a biologist, and location of existing septic system. Um, I would deem incomplete, not grant any labels. I would request a motion.
If it was me, I would table this whole thing at this point. Let him go get an engineer, make sure he can take care of the septic issue.
Do it that way too.
Yeah, because all of this will be on that at this point that we're talking about.
Those, those are the things. A, we need a plan, right? Um, sign the stamp, a professional plan, which will lead you into C and D and E and getting those handled. Right?
We're not gonna ask for the traffic side.
No. I don't see, you, the building department, I don't see any relevance either with the traffic, do you?
No.
No. Um, the topography was gonna be on the plan, when they, when they, when you get a full-blown one, that'll be on there, so. Oh, yeah, no. He needs to know this. Go ahead, spit it out.
No, if he, if he hires, if he hires an engineer, all these questions will be answered. Because they know exactly what you're gonna need to get back through us in the state. So just reach out to whomever. Make sure that they're familiar with what you're trying to do. You need a special use permit. You know, there's certain firms that do that and are aware of.
Motion's going forward. Yep, so Ronnie had a motion on the floor to table this to a further date.
So we can't get him close enough to, to table it to a hearing.
I agree.
So let's just table it, do another, uh, you get that homework done, then we'll do another pre-op and then you hear it. All right?
Second. Discussion?
I mean, overall, I support the plan. You know, as long as you get what we need to get by this thing, then, then I'm supportive of it.
Yeah, because this floor, I don't wanna.
It wouldn't be wasting your time, at least with regard to me.
Yeah, we, we're not interested in the business lead at all, we're just, we just need to do it, the way it was here.
Certain things we have to do. So, with that being said, um, I guess, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So if you have any questions, that's your best resource over there, Tony and Sherry, they can help you with any of the questions. They're not, they're not limiting or restricting you, it's, it's just what the state will require. All right, we have minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion. A mic on the floor. That was, uh. Thank you, good luck. That was actually the, uh, the, uh, pre-op for Mr. O'Law.
Uh, two changes.
Oh, sorry.
Two changes, uh, Mr. Spazada on page five.
Spazada.
Spazada.
That's not an A on that.
And Trafis on the same page at the bottom, otherwise it's missed.
All right, so he had a motion and a second. Any more discussion? And then Dan actually read through these very thoroughly and made a couple of little minor adjustments. All in favor? Anything else? I, um. Ratified February, February twentieth. Minutes, meeting, decision. I ratify a, uh. Offing an industrial park, uh, decision, February twentieth. We don't really, just putting it on the record, I like that word. All right. Uh, next meeting is?
Same date that we have a station.
July sixteenth. Better than, lowly not so experienced. They're all experienced, but they're all, they've all.
Can I entertain a motion?
All in favor?